Sean? Hey, can you hear us?
Yeah. Good afternoon.
Hey Sean, can you hear us okay?
I can.
Alright, the first order of business, just to kind of get things out of the way. Sean couldn't join us in person today. The change order for the landing on the agenda. Cindy just handed out the amended, slightly changed version. The number's gone down a little bit. But we thought we'd let Sean kind of explain what it is, why it is, and respond to any questions or concerns. So, Sean, you want to go ahead and start kind of introducing what we've got for us here?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the last change order, change order four, we had a change order five that had to do with campus improvements associated with the impound lot. But the last change order associated with the community center structure itself was change order four on September eighth. We are now at change order six that's in front of you. This is various items that have come up dating back to last September through October, November to date that have accumulated over the course of construction. We don't want to bring a change order in front of you, you know, every couple of weeks with every question that comes up through construction. But, so this is various questions that have been raised onsite by the contractor installing as we've gone through building. And there are probably about twelve specific items that this change order addresses to catch the contractor up to date. A lot of them have to do with where we are in construction, associated with the building structures, setting mechanical units, basically getting the building tightened up and enclosed. So, to date, this is all the questions that arose with directions and recommendations provided back with our engineers' input and the cost to do those. I will say that a lot of these items, materials, we are seeing, as everyone's probably well aware, the costs are inflated. They're higher than what they normally would be just based on availability and a lot of these work time sensitive items that we needed to get onsite to keep the contractor moving. So, again, I'm here to speak to any specific items you want to talk about or any questions you have specifically, but this is basically from the last construction directed changes in September up to today.
So, these are things that the interaction between various inspectors, the contractors, the design team have to make adjustments in the field as you go through a project. That's what these are. There are several small things, but we do need to get it approved moving forward. But we do have both of these shown here if you have specific questions you'd like to ask.
Do we have that list?
It should be in your agenda.
Oh, in the agenda, okay, yes.
Sean, this, these are all covered, all as well within a range of our contingency dollars, is that correct? We have contingency.
I believe so. I can't speak to the specific numbers, but this change order, number six, is more than half what number four was, the last contingency change order.
Let me ask, is, is the figure that we have in our packet, which is two hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred five dollars in nine ninety-six, is that what this change order total is, or is that a summation? Because what we have here is not.
That's right. What was handed out just a minute ago is the revision. We made some slight tweaks of the went, that went through this weekend, documentation ready, and it goes down about two thousand.
So, what's the total that we're approving today?
The amount that we just handed. Two fifty-one, six fifty-four.
Two fifty-one.
Two fifty-one.
I, I will add and point out too, this does include seven, a total of seven weather delay days that have accumulated since last September. I, I will say, as my experience, we've only got seven weather delays up until now, which is pretty dang good. So, but this, this are weather delay, weather delay days that the contractor is due according to the specifications, you know, inclement weather. So, they have accumulated as well and they're included in this change order, so seven days. Not associated with the changes, just weather.
For example, I think one of the changes that's involved here by track is the, the area where you maintain one of the rooftop heating and air units, needed the parapet wall to meet certain specifications. We went back and forth on the construction of the wall to make sure it was safe for people that, that went up on, on the roof to work on the units. Those are the kinds of things that you anticipate finding in the field and that, that's what we're addressing.
So, mayor, to your question, Sean, this is, this is a major part of that. What is our balance in the contingency?
What is our balance in contingency?
Tony, if you have a running balance on contingency amounts, I know that we try and stay close to it. I believe this is less than the contingency amount, but we have contingency in various categories. So, it is certainly under the amount we have available from bond proceeds, and I believe it is under the amount we have in the contingency.
I'd like to know that sometime, it's not, not necessarily right now.
Yeah, we, we can get that.
And that bond is our original, I didn't know you got a bond.
No, it's a lot more than that. The thirty-eight million.
That's right, we did part of it too, part of it went to public works, didn't some other guy decide?
Thirty-eight million was all for the community center and then we got a premium when we sold it.
And we're still a little over four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, under thirty-two million.
And remember, some of the other change orders that Sean referred to were additions to the project. Addition of, of part of the road, we had the, the impound lot, the, the other things that were not anticipating the original concept because we had the resources and we had the crews onsite to make that work. So, so we're still well ahead of the game in terms of project management and staying within the cost.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about, is those additional things then, which were not in the original concept of the bond issue, have been able to be covered.
That's correct. And we still, still have adequate money left over there. We're not done yet with the bond proceeds. Tony, have you got a?
I've, I've got a real baby, but I think I wanted to, very beginning, it's the one I have. For contingency, it was, it was close to, it was nine hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars as project contingency. So, we've expended some of that.
So, we're still, still good, we're, but we've still got a good six months of hard construction to go. There will be more, we know that's going to be the case and, and once we move inside, we've got more trades that are, that are dealing with it. But, but from staff perspective and from the, the design and construction team, these are the kinds of things that we, we need to go ahead and approve to keep the project on track.
Tony, how are they handling the things that were in the original contract, but they've gone up in price or we?
We're still having conversations about that, and that's, that's something we'll try and bring to you here in the next few weeks and kind of have a conversation about that. And that is, it's a significant problem with construction right now.
And the, I gather, the weather days that you refer to, two things affect the reduction of those, those, one, better weather, and two, if we get a roof on the building, are we close to that or is that?
Yes, we are, we are geared to drive in, which means basically the, the building will be sealed and they can move interior to start working on finishes. They're very close to that. I think they're lacking some windows, the main, the main curtain wall, the main window in the front lobby. As soon as, I think those get delivered, they're, they will be sealed. The roof, I think, is very, very close. There's a small, I mean, we're, they're probably ninety percent there on the roof itself. So, they're, they're moving right along. You know, we're through kind of, we got through winter pretty well. We're hoping for some good, nice warm days ahead. Six more months is what the contract schedule's looking like. I, I will speak to Pat and I know Verwo can attest as well, that they're working hard and pushing. They're playing, so to say, whack-a-mole with lots of material increases of where they can, trying to stay ahead of the game. It, it's a moving target. Every day we get a new kind of announcement of a new material or new item goes on back order or is hard to find. So, you know, they're, they're working hard to try and stay ahead of, of all that. And as you probably may have seen driving by there, the big, out in front of the parking lot where they've been stop piling, ordering materials ahead of time, you can see that those piles of materials is getting smaller and smaller. So, they're, they're moving right along. But, you know, we have six, six more months of, there's a lot to do once we get inside the building. Interior framing's going in, mechanical installations, electrical rough ends, they're, they're pushing hard.
Are we stop piling those sort of things now or can?
As best they can and whenever they submit their monthly payment applications, they, they've got offsite storage as well that they're storing in kind of secure warehouse locations that they provide photo documentation, certificates of insurance. So, they're, they're being very strategic in trying to stay ahead, knowing, anticipating what they can order ahead of time and basically store to avoid any sort of delays. And, but it, it truly is kind of a, almost a guessing game because we get announcements, the strangest things. For a while there, a couple of months ago, there was conversations about paint and it wasn't the paint itself, it was the cans that that comes in. They're just having trouble getting those. So, you know, it's just, it's all over the place and all they can do is, is order where they can and store materials as it becomes available, as they need it. So, they're working hard, I will say that.
I think, looking forward from what I have gathered, one of the components that's a big, one of the larger concerns is going to be drywall. Drywall market is a little volatile, but we're not in a position where we're drying up to store some of that inside the structure and still work around it. I think that will be one of the challenges we're trying to work through. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. We're close.
Any other questions on this, on this, I'll get you. Sean, thank you. We appreciate your work and your attention to it and occasionally working some magic.
Yeah, absolutely. My pleasure.
We do appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Alright, so we done? We can let, let him go do some of his other work?
Ask him if he got his barn built for his wife.
Did you get your barn?
I did, I did. I have a very happy life.
What did you end up paying for your tuba floors?
Uh, it was a lot. And then the metal, I got hit with metal on the, for the walls. I got hit pretty good on that. But, uh, the barn, it cost about four and a half times more than we initially anticipated. Had I moved a little bit quicker, I probably could have done better.
Congratulations.
Alright, thanks Sean. Alright, so.
Well, thank you everybody.
On the agenda, just remember, and I've got it in my introduction comments, that the amount has changed from what's on the printed agenda to the amount of, of, we've got twelve years, so it'll be the.
Two fifty-one, six fifty-four number.
That's correct. And I appreciate you taking things out of order so we can accommodate Sean and get the technology put together.
Yeah. Among items on the agenda we probably need to address, one, that we have nominees for that property maintenance board of fields. The, Tony, you forwarded some nominations, the, they don't real requirement, I guess somebody has to live in the city, is that?
That's correct, they have to be a resident.
Are we okay with this or we need to decide, I mean, are there any alternate nominations or what, where you think?
So, Tony, you said that staff came up with these to facilitate our nomination process?
Right.
And it's obvious that you looked at various different, or looked at it from different perspectives. And these individuals know that this is going to be something where they're going to have to be rather stern or tough or hold the line?
They will have to occasionally face someone that's unhappy with the situation, that's, that's absolutely the case. And, and staff, these are suggestions, they did reach out and find that these people would be willing to serve, you, you want to have them replaced, but we were just trying to help you because we know how hard it is coming up with names. A particular five at once is not an easy thing to do, so these are suggestions, but if you have better folks, that's, we certainly understand that.
Tony, this is not a disinformation committee.
He didn't want to do that.
I might, I might, I never did talk to him. I mean, I told him that.
Oh, I told him that bad.
Okay, I think it's a good idea.
Do we need to, if we're okay with these five nominees, do we need to decide who does a one-year term or who does a two or who does a three?
That, that's, when you're doing a new board like this, that's always the most tenuous part is who gets a one-year term and then a two and then three. And we've got it set up where the, it'd be two for one year, two for two, and then one for three. And then, of course, they'd be eligible for re-nomination to fill a complete term. So, the, the way the agenda is set up is, is in that way, two, two is one year.
So, whenever we put in for two, that we put in for a two-year, or a one-year term, in one year, they could also, everybody after that is for a three-year term, so they would go back home for three.
Right.
Okay.
So, they'd have a complete term if they were reappointed next year.
But are we going to flip a coin or draw names out of a hat or how do we want, or you feel strongly that one person ought to be a three-year term or what?
I'd like to ask first, is two three-year terms, is that the way?
Well, I gave two ones, two twos, and one three, but no, that doesn't matter.
I mean, overall on the board, once it gets established, you can serve, what, I can serve two three-year terms and then I'm off?
I know that the terms are three years, I don't know that there's a sunset at Lawrence Feathers, as you said.
I'm looking at the ordinance right now, I don't, I don't, I don't think there's any.
I believe we have a.
So, they could, could serve as long as you're willing to reappoint them.
Well, I think that's something we need to look at on all of our boards, is, is how long. At this, we're at the eleventh hour on this one, but I, you know, I don't think we discussed that on, you know, different things, but on all of our boards. So, what you're saying is the one who has a one-year term could be reelected and start a three-year term, that they would have been, then you were, you're working into your stagger.
That's correct.
Yes, the ordinance just says terms of office are three-year terms, but stagger.
And that was developed by the planning staff?
Yes, this is, yes, this ordinance.
How often do they meet?
They meet, it's needed when there's an appeal filed, so only if we have someone who has an enforcement action, they have a decision from staff, they're not actually tapped, then they follow the appeal. So, they might never be, or they might need, you know, frequently, more frequently during the summer.
Similar to the construction board, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the construction board's a great example. We're able to work out those almost always, and they've not met for at least fifteen years. So, but I think.
They did pay monthly.
Yeah, but the, this board with the property maintenance is more likely to be emotional and I think you will have some appeals along the way.
And if we wanted to in the future, I mean, we don't, we're not necessarily tied to the areas that are represented here.
No, those were just staff's ideas of people that might be helpful to have, but there are no requirements in the ordinance to have representatives of certain fields.
Have they agreed to serve?
They have agreed to serve. The only requirement in the ordinance is they have to be a resident of the city.
Well, we want to decide who, who gets two years and who gets three years, or we want to leave that up to planning also. It's, it don't matter to me what's the preference.
It would be better to make that as part of the motion if you could.
Okay. I don't have the names in front of me, on my, agenda on my list.
And there's how many names?
Five.
First name for one year, next two, two years, the next two, three years. Is that the way you put it?
I, I do it the other way, two, two and one, but.
Two, two and one. Just go down the list. Because the guy that's going to know most about it's going to be the guy that gets put on for one year.
Yeah, that.
Four years, he'll have seniority on everybody.
He'll, he'll know what's going on and who's the guy that doesn't cut his grass and shows up every year, so.
We got Dickerson Cobble, Hale Clement Williams, that's not, we could go alphabetical order, the first two.
Let me see that, that's, did you get my message?
Yes, and, and my question is, is, is that, is he a resident? I don't know where he lives.
City resident, David Quillen.
Yeah, I don't know.
He did.
I don't, I don't, I, I tried to look it up, he owns too many properties for me to be sure. I don't know where he lives, but that's, that's, that's fine.
Call him, if you want to find out where he lives.
I'll check, can you ask if he wants to serve?
Yeah, but I didn't ask him if he lived in the city, I guess, same did he did.
And there's a bunch of Quillens in town, I wasn't sure.
He's got some brothers, a mom and a daddy.
He's got one, some of them gone.
Now they're first.
Call them, big names.
But if, when we get out there, if we could have a motion that says, first by A and B for empowering terms, you know, just name the, assign the terms as we make the motion, that would be the cleanest way to go.
In all five, in one motion?
That, that's the way the ordinance is structured, is one motion.
We're going to have to apply, apply terms to names.
Right, but I think that could be part of the motion, so you can say, Mr. Brown for one year, Mrs. Green for two.
I think Tommy wants to be David Quillen in place of her.
Did you call Laura and she said yes?
Oh, yes, yes, Laura, I saw you say Laura, so I apologize. Yes, everyone on the, the list we have is willing to serve.
Williams.
Yeah, well, we put Lauren on there too.
I think that might be a conflict, because I got a court with the officers. Sure, I'll serve.
Okay, Williams, that's not your problem, but. Well, while Tommy's checking on that, we've got Humane Society Board, want two people to go back on. The mayor's appointment is Willie Santana, and I'm going to put him back on. We had counsel for the second one, hey, you were looking for one, are you going to have a recommendation or make a motion?
Yes, I asked, I asked council members to.
Okay. Reg Board, we've got three, all three of those have expressed a willingness to continue. And if you, and they have someone else who want to nominate beyond that board to take us on. That would be tight.
Yes.
So, you want to replace Laura Dickerson with David Quillen, is that true?
That would be my suggestion, but I don't. Can I see that place looking up? I've never seen it, but I. I wonder why they're living there. What's here, the here controls, the leash law? They're changing.
The leash law? The animal control is the one that.
They make that initiative since that city came.
Yeah, well, city council adopts the ordinance, but the animal control's the one that forces the. I think we've had the leash law we've had for a good while, I don't remember when we did.
But I mean, we obviously work with the police.
Don't have.
They will, and you might, you gotta have a.
They don't have my dogs either, that's it. There, there may be more well behaved.
The manager's got to decide who gets the two-year, who gets.
You're on a leash?
I'm barely, if I put it on a leash, I'm, I'm, don't have to do much walking.
Do you pull the law? Or one, two? I'd like to do this in the yard.
No, no, they're in the fence.
That, that is legal, you said.
I think that is legal.
If there's a discussion.
Okay, you need one one.
You want from something?
You need one one, one one-year term and two twos. But we have five people, if you do two twos and one three, that's only four.
We have one three, two twos, and two ones.
Two ones.
We've got one, two, two. I'll just go down on this, but one, two, two, however the list is.
Yeah. Well, if you look at your agenda, it's, it's got it laid out as two for one year, two for two years, and one for three years.
When you make the motion specify, I got too much to keep up with.
Who's going to make the motion?
Do you all have a problem that David Quillen be on that?
David's a former student of mine, nineteen eighty. He started the, the.
Second semester.
And the.
Do you have a problem?
No, no.
And that's no reflection on Laura Dickerson, I think she's a fine person. I just think we need to be getting some deep blood into the things that are going on.
Do it to Tony then, he can read it out and it hurts.
I think she's a keeper.
Alright, we got anything else on this agenda that you want to get clear of that?
Laura is on that, keep in mind, I go with her every year on that.
She's a hard worker.
She is a hard worker.
Tony, the approval of Jolly Park, that donation is not just a matter of okay, it's there is some legal stuff involved there, is that ready to go?
There are several things we've been working with Lauren to make sure that we're, we're covered on. Silly thing like contractors' liens and, and making sure that the park is complete before they're done. We've done the best job we think we can to protect as we move forward. So, the resolution accepts the park on the land that we already own, as well as accepts the donation of the additional land where the parking lot was constructed. So, the one resolution takes care of both of those things, but Lauren spent some, some time working out these details and then you all may be able to fill in some gaps that I don't know.
Is there anything we need to know on that or any?
I, I mean, I think it's, I think it's covered, it's pretty clear cut, so, but that, we already got that quick one D for that property, so that will be included with this as well.
Where are we on, where are we on the, going from Fred Latta to? We've engaged the engineer to give us a study and a report. He is continuing to ask questions. Larry, that's the last I heard, I don't know if he's got a target date for giving us for the board.
No, no, I've not heard of the date yet, so.
One of the concerns with the park is the putting in a mid-block crossing, we need to make sure we follow the, the standards so we don't incur unnecessary liability. That's the reason for going with the engineering review.
Explains what you just said.
In other words, if you have a crosswalk at a corner, people expect to see people crossing the street there. But if it's in the middle of the lot, down Jackson Street, and suddenly they're surprised because someone's in the middle of the street. So, we need to look, make sure that it's adequately marked, there may need to be flashing lights.
We're not going at the corner?
No, it's, it's a corner Pleasant, but it's not a corner on the, on the Jackson Street, it's in the middle of Jackson, just a straight line through there. And there's no, not been a stop sign, there was no, people aren't accustomed to having to stop there.
Is that Pleasant Avenue is not lined up squarely with the driveway into the park? Is that?
No, it is not.
That's part of what the problem is?
Part, part, yeah, that's part of the problem, right now, the ramps, if we're doing that, we might bring the ramps into, you know. Part, part, yeah, that's part of the problem, right now, the ramps, if we're doing that, we might bring the ramps into, you know, compliance with current standards. So, uh, there's, uh, uh, more work to do in, in, with the existing sidewalks that were there. Uh, the engineering study also protects the city liability wise, while we're moving things around, cause they were put there because of the engineering study before, so, uh, that's, that's, that's.
And they, they, no, no consideration that Jolly Park's been built?
What now?
You said that, that it was consideration that it was engineered before, and now they're, they're upset, or not upset, but they're concerned that we're engineering again. Would it be because Jolly Park's been built?
I think the real problem is that we didn't ident- identify this issue until very late in the construction. Would identify this early, the early planning, that would have been easier to address it quickly.
We can resolve that problem up there on the walkway over the street.
We could do a train out.
Most people bypass that overhead.
I mean, the fence has been installed.
It looks good.
So, uh, uh, as best as it could be. Uh, and, again, matching the greenway that walks through there, we're changing it around, and there's a crosswalk that was not existence that we need to have. And, uh, so, uh, I, we should have something this week on the drawing, and, and, uh, we should, uh, should be able to contract that out fairly quickly, so.
Will we have that done by, granted?
We'll try our best, I can't guarantee.
It's gonna be tight, but of course, the park construction is gonna be tight too.
Without the, I was hung up yesterday, but.
The ramps on asphalt won't take that long, I mean, not the ramps, but the, the walkway on asphalt won't take that long, but the ramps will take longer.
Basing's a real problem right now.
Is that what, I, for by, I noticed that it wasn't moving right.
They bought enough bits, but then decided it was in a period that the bits were stolen conscious.
They didn't stretch it.
So they couldn't stretch it.
Well, they even changed their design because of supply issues too.
And then the sod is being delayed because of the car wash.
You know, in the scheme of things, what our part is, yes, there, we're having, but the streets, we wouldn't let them do the streets anyway. But what we're expanding and doing is, is not anything in comparison to what they get, they're giving us.
No, no, definitely, absolutely not, there's been a great amount for a fantastic facility. It's just, it would have been easier had we identified this in the winter, as opposed to just a few weeks before.
But we're used to that, aren't we?
Unfortunately, yeah. Anything else?
Uh, there is a, a road here, uh, up here, I believe it's, uh, one at Thompson Creek, we talked about that.
What's your concern, or what's your place?
The right-of-way acquisition, because I, I know, I don't know how that's falling out, I know that I've been contacted, Tommy's been contacted too, by the Wise Carvers, wanting to know if that road is being, that was taken, got an awful lot of your front yard. And Tommy had mentioned that you talked over, I believe, and there's a change, but I don't know how much of a change that is.
The, this contract is with the firm that will handle the appraisal, the amount that will be, be paid for the, the right-of-way acquisition. Uh, we continue to have conversations with both of the, the brothers, the Wise Carvers, uh, involved, the, the design team, the city staff, and, as well as the, uh, overage, the contractors. Uh, we continue to have conversations, uh, as we go forward, but this contract only has to do with the, the person that does the appraisal for the amount and gets the agreement put together. The, the negotiator's still gonna be on us, is that a fair assessment there?
Is Mitch Cox, is, is it gonna, have you seen any plenary designs?
Oh, yeah, we've seen multiple plenarys.
Is it still going into their front yard?
Yes, any way you do this curve is gonna take some of Mitch Cox's corner, and it's gonna take some of Mark Wise Carver's front yard. Yes, the, I think the fundamental design questions have to do with, the shape of the curve could either be a twenty-five mile an hour design radius, or a thirty mile design, an hour, design radius. Our specifications for, for development roads is the minimum is thirty, that's our strong preference, but that puts more property over on the Wise Carver side than, than the Mitch Cox side.
What about the twenty-five, I don't understand the difference, in how you design the curve?
Yes, it's, it's the shape of the curve that, that you design, so a twenty-five mile an hour curve can be sharper than a thirty. But our standards, Steve, I'm speaking of currently, the subdivision regs and development regs require thirty mile an hour curves.
For a collector's street, yes.
If, if they wanted to talk to somebody about that, who would they be talking to?
They'd be talking to Larry, that's who they'd be talking to.
That's who they've been, been talking to, and, and they've met a number of times in, in the front yard. And, uh, I think the real problem, I think there are areas of concern and, and conversation we'll have to get, get worked out, as you do with any right-of-way. The big fly in the organ is Adamus and the gas line, and we're trying real hard to work with them, and that's been much more difficult than any other player.
Tell us about your conversations, Larry, with them.
Basically, we went and met with Mark Wise Carver and showed him, uh, the design.
No.
And, uh, and they staked out basically the outside perimeter of the greenway where it would go in the yard, and of course, he asked questions. And we tried to address those questions on slope and what, what would be included, what not included, addressing items like that. So, uh, uh, the curve, the final, uh, measurements, that's not the right word, but the scheme, I guess, uh, uh, sent that to the, the appraiser, uh, Helles. Uh, he's gonna set up a meeting with Mark and discuss, be able to get those dollar amounts and start discussion with the property owner. Mark is the first one, cause they got in that current, in the current phase, that's part of the curve.
Right.
So we gotta get that curve done nowhere wide right now, and then the other property owners will do the index going on, on, uh, out, time, in the timeline. But Mark's the, not say there's others not important, but he's the important one right now to get him, uh, uh, to work whatever arrangement we need to, we think.
And what is his connection with Peggy?
Peggy.
Wise Carver, is that his sister-in-law?
He's a brother-in-law, if Peggy's married to Jeff, Jeff and Mark are brothers.
Jeff, Jeff and Mark are brothers.
And Jeff does what, what is his, is he the guy with the tranged dog?
He tranged dog, I don't know what else he is, but, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's who, that's who I'm talking to.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we've been talking more to Mark because that's the first piece.
Direction.
We, we definitely, we've not talked to Jeff yet, but, uh, but, uh, like I said, they, they had states, uh, they, they put the, uh, uh, design into GPS units, so they can state it out, show exactly, Mark, kind of, where the boundary lines would be, so. And, uh, he, he asked questions, he didn't say no, he didn't say yes, but, but we gotta meet back with him and start the, you know, that discussion, so.
The real question and concern that he has is a question, is it a twenty-five mile per hour curve, which requires cars to go slower, so it will be the sharper turn and use less of his yard, is that right? And the thirty mile, or is it just the opposite?
Opposite, the thirty mile an hour, well.
Well, see, the faster the car, the wider the curve to give them more time to sway, right?
The faster, well, the, the faster the turn, the, the, uh, more flatter the curve is. So the curve stays away from Wise Carver house more at the thirty mile an hour curve, and takes more Mitch's front, uh, landscaping, you know, lawn, if you will, area. But then it wipes out, and then, uh, then it takes some of Mark's and, and, uh, and, uh, Jeff's, well, and down, you know, but, uh, but, yeah.
Well, what it says in there, nine tracts of land, that's, that's land between Morse Boulevard and that turn?
Yeah, that's the whole thing, yeah.
Okay.
That's the whole thing, that's to, to get him under contract, so he can begin those negotiations with those property owners. Of course, anything that's negotiated, of course, will have to come forward to you, you folks to, for approval, so.
Okay, one more time, so I can clarify these, the thirty mile an hour is less property off the Wise Carvers?
It's di- in, in my view, it's less, it's different, because the front porch, you know, he's right on the road anyway.
Right.
Uh, or Thompson Creek, I need a board.
Just mark a little.
Let me, let me, let me do this, his house here, okay?
Right.
Okay, the curve, the twenty-five comes closer to his home and is more straight, okay, cause it's out of the radius. The thirty kind of flattens out.
I got you.
So here, it's, it's further away, in fact, there's gonna be some land here that we don't need, that may be part of discussion to allow, you know, to, you know, trade off to him. But on this open area, he's got a gravel driveway on down, that open area, that's where it really, uh, goes to him and I, I don't wanna say dent system, I'll say wrong. Uh, but, uh, but the states, it's, they're out there, they're out there. And it's basically the edge of the pavements where the gas line, the gas company wanted to put the gas line in. And, uh, like Tony said, we're, we're trying to raise steam a little bit, cause if they can get that gas line in, energize it, then we can't blast. And we know on out here that's wrong, so if we can't blast, then that means it's, we're gonna have to drill, which is not good.
That would be expensive.
So, so.
Keep them out of there.
So we're, we're trying our best.
Well, but I, I understand that, that the preference, not just of the Wise Carvers, but to a, a lot of people, is the thirty mile an hour.
All right, I think that's the most prudent answer we'd get done.
It looks better and, and.
Looks better, that's a good, good way, but.
And, and, it, it's cleaner look.
Yes.
And we got to move, uh, in that matter of what we, we put in, but, uh, there's a pad mount that we need to move and, and, and water line that needs to be moved also. Uh, so, uh, but, uh, the thirty mile an hour curve will be a better looking curve.
That's what I think.
And, and they want some, address some kind of barrier or something for the greenway, so people just don't walk in their yard, which is understandable, so.
Yeah, that's the, the profile for this road, not just a road, the sidewalk of one side and a greenway on the other side as well as a road. So it's a little more, and there'll be different kinds of traffic, so, uh, Wise Carvers have indicated some concern about walkers going past their front yard more than some.
Well, I tell you, that area from Thompson Creek to Walmart looks great, with the greenway on one side and the sidewalk.
It's going to make a substantial difference the way that part of town moves.
Is that going real close to his front porch, same?
The twenty-five mile an hour would, the thirty, the thirty's not.
It still is, and it's, it's taking a portion of his front yard though, still.
It would take, probably, if you know how his driveway is, say this is his driveway, it's cutting that corner, that'll be the edge of the corner, but of course, it keeps swinging out, because it's more of a flatter curve, and that grassy area, that, it, it'll take, you know, some of it.
The portion that's closest to his property is the ten-foot walking path, correct?
Yeah, right.
And, and remember, the two brothers, Mark's house is much closer to the road than his brothers.
It's.
He saved the back part for farming and, and, so now he's got a, his home is closer to the existing road, that the wider new road will, it'll be pretty close to the house.
What's the, uh, timeline on the gas line out there?
We are continuing to talk to and about one another, but we don't have a timeline for them, uh, we are hoping to have our road under construction.
And it's not only in the corner there of Morse and the park where they have, above the tennis courts, that section marked off. But you said that there were some other areas, do we not have to do some conversion, because that's taking, that's utilizing park land that cannot be built on in the future?
I don't know the legalities of a public utility and the, the conversion laws for the park. It's not taking land away, but it does change its use. But the gas line is a transmission line, it will impact a lot of properties on the east end, they're trying to get all the way back to the industrial park, so that, this is one piece of a bigger project.
I realize that, but I do realize that it has to be conversion, it takes a while, it's not just say today and do tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I don't know, and hopefully, we don't have to do the legal research, but I don't think that a utility easement's going to trigger conversion, but that's, that's not what we're gonna do.
I think it would be beneficial to at least, in this situation, I don't think, I think forgiveness and permission are not the same in this one.